Hello, good evening. We have the time at 7:00 PM. Welcome to the regular trustee meeting for the month. Will you please stand with me and join in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Heiston, would you like to call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Raymert.
Here.
Mrs. Reed.
Here.
And Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. This is the regular monthly board of trustees meeting. I appreciate those of you joining with us this evening. At this time, we'll ask if there's any public comments. Please refrain to five minutes on your comments. State your name and address if you'd like to address the board. Okay. No public comments. Some of you might remember, we've had a couple of public hearings on Resolution 2021-19. At this time, I want to ask that we pick that issue resolution back up from the table for discussion. Make a motion to pick that up. Mr. Heiston?
Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll just note that we had had the required public hearings for Resolution 2021-19 that was related to the $5 license tax, permissive motor vehicle license tax that we can assess here in the township. We had presentations from Mr. Holbrook in the road department, and we had public availability for comments. There were a handful of comments. We appreciate those that attended and made comments on that topic. We had delayed the vote until this evening, and so at this time, I guess if there's any discussion, we can have that discussion. I know, Ms. Reed, you weren't able to attend last meeting. You were preoccupied with something very important, and so hopefully you've had a chance to catch back up with what happened at that second hearing. And we'll all just pause here if there's anybody who has any questions or discussions on that topic. Okay, Mr. Heiston, with that, I assume there's no other questions, and I believe we can go ahead and do a roll call vote. Mr. Heiston, are you on mute? My chance?
I'm sorry. I was. Before we vote, let me read 2021-19's title. Just so everyone knows what we're voting on, it's a resolution to levy an annual $5 license tax upon the operation of motor vehicles on the public roads and highways in the unincorporated territory of the township for any authorized purpose under the authority of Ohio Revised Code Section 4504.181. And with that in mind, I will call the roll. Mr. Raymert?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
This is to actually vote on whether or not to impose it, correct? No.
No, that was a no, Mrs. Reed. I'm sorry.
Correct. It was a no.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
The vote is two to one. We do have a majority in favor of adopting Resolution 2021-19. We were previously advised by the prosecutor's office that a unanimous vote is not required, only a majority vote. So Resolution 2021-19 is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Heiston. With that, we'll move on to the fiscal officer report. Mr. Heiston, I'm turning it over to you.
Mr. Heiston, if I could interrupt for a minute, I, Mark Keener, 7865 Jamaica. I'd like to ask Mrs. Reed, why is road commissioner, she's voting against something that would help the road department?
Yeah, I'm voting, I voted no on that because I believe, if I'm correct, I think we were eight votes shy of it passing the last time. I believe it was under 10, the last time it was put before the citizens. And I believe that, I'm here to represent the citizens of what they voted me in to do. And so I personally believe that they should have a right to vote on things before we just tax them. Believe in a way, it's taxation without representation. They're not getting the chance to vote on it. And I think that before we add it to them, we needed possibly put on the ballot again and notify them. If this doesn't pass, then it would be this $5, because it was so close last time, and I believe we've put it on twice since I've been here. And I think the first time, I don't have those numbers, but I think it was less than maybe 50 or 100 people the first time, and the next time it got close to eight. Or I'm sorry, eight people. That's just my personal feeling of why I voted no, Mr. Keener.
Okay. Well, if we'd had a little more support, including trustees putting signs in their yards for the last levy, we could have gotten over that eight votes, but.
Mr. Keener, I hand wrote over a thousand postcards for that levy.
Uh, no, actually, not for the last vote, but.
Okay, I appreciate the comments, Mr. Keener. With that, Mr. Heiston, would you like to go ahead with the fiscal officer report?
If I may interrupt, this is Deborah Cross. Can I speak?
Yes, can you limit the comments to five minutes, please, in order to report your name and address?
Absolutely. Deborah Cross, 7444 South Stivers Road, Germantown, Ohio. Ms. Reddick-Reed, I would like you to comment, though. Will you have those same feelings about putting something before the voters when it comes to the JED?
So, I would ask, Ms. Cross, I'm fine with you having public comment. That's fine. Let's not turn this into a debate, because we did have two public hearings on this specific topic. I mean, everyone's had an opportunity to give their input on this topic. If you'd like to give, you know, a few comments, that's fine. But we're not going to have a debate after the two public hearings, please.
So there's no answer?
I think she just addressed Mr. Keener on the same concern with why she did speculation on future topics.
Mr. Remmer, I believe you're equal. Could we let Ms. Reed speak, please?
No, I'm trying to keep this orderly and moving forward. We're not going to turn this into a debate. Like I had mentioned, she explained why she voted the way she did. We don't need to turn this into a debate. We've had the public hearings. I'd appreciate if we can move on with our public meeting tonight. It's a regular trustee meeting, not on this specific topic to address any further. So I appreciate that. Mr. Heiston, I'm going to turn it over to you again for the fiscal officer report, please.
Very good. Thank you very much. Give me just one second here. All right. Good evening again, everyone. First of all, we have three sets of meeting minutes that I presented to you. We have the special meeting on May the 5th, which was to discuss the potential JED. The regular trustee meeting on May the 10th, and a special meeting on May the 18th, which was our second public hearing on the $5 motor vehicle tax. Is there any corrections or changes to the minutes?
I didn't see any. I'll make a motion to approve all three as submitted.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I was absent, obviously, on the 18th, so I don't know how that vote works, if we're going to put them all together.
Would you like to abstain, Mrs. Reed?
Yes, since I was not present, that's probably best.
Okay. And were there any no votes? I didn't get a chance to ask for those. Okay, so I think we have two yeses, one abstention. Very good. Thank you very much. I also, as I always do, sent you the financial reports for the month of May. I think it says April on my written report, sorry, the month of May. And you have the May 31st fund status report, the year-to-date through the end of May cash summary by fund, the May receipt listing, and the May payment listing. And I want to point out several items to you in those reports. First of all, looking at the receipt listing, number 62, in the amount of $399,805.04, is the February tax settlement from the Montgomery County Auditor. We had gotten some advances up until now, but this was the final settlement for the first half collections. Also, receipt number 66 was in the amount of $89,971.98, and this is also the first half homestead and rollback payment, which we received from the state of Ohio. Warrant number 50485 was to the city of Germantown for $544,000 even, and that is the first half tax collections for five of our joint levies, the parks, the pool, the fire, the senior citizen, and the fire EMS levy from 2010. And finally, warrant number 50486 to the city of Germantown in the amount of $55,092.52 is the city's calculated share of the first half tax collection on the road joint levy. Is there any questions about the financial reports? If not, could I have a motion to approve the May financial reports, authorize the payment of the May bills, which includes warrants 50472 to 50488, and vouchers 299 through 425 for payroll direct deposit, payroll tax withholdings, and other electronic payments?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Well, our continuing discussion this month, we have learned that the decision to potentially include Ohio's townships in the distribution of funds from the $1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 has now been delegated by the U.S. Treasury Department back to the state of Ohio. Up until now, we had been waiting for a decision from the Treasury, and they have bumped it down, kicked the can, back to Ohio. Now, the Ohio Township Association has indicated that they've not received any information concerning a decision by the state. We have heard some rumblings that there may have been a decision made, but we've gotten no official notice. So I'm just going to leave it at that and hope that we get an official notice sometime soon.
Can I interrupt, Mr. Heiston, if you don't mind?
Absolutely, Mrs. Reed.
So today, actually, I received a phone call from our state representative that said that they hoped to pass it on the budget on June 25th. And so until then, it is not official, but they expect the first payment to come out in July. They're not sure, sorry, the first payment will come out in July, and then the next payment will be within 12 months, is the plan. That was official from the staff, I guess, as of this morning. They're not sure of what the amount that we will get, however, is. So that's not officially passed, but they're hoping it passes on June 25th. So, and the total sum, I believe, is $420 million-ish. I should say $420 million-ish. I don't know. There's an exact figure on it.
I think that is correct, the amount, $420 million approximately. And I had seen something that told me the same thing that Mr. Young told you, that it may end up in the state's biennial budget that they will be approving later this month. Yeah. Very good. Hopefully, we will get good news. That's all I can say about this. It's a very big number that we would lose out on if they don't go that direction. Okay, next topic. Following our meeting last month, I did forward the paperwork to the county Board of Elections to place the half mil parks levy on the November 2nd ballot. So that process has been completed from our end. It's now in the hands of the Board of Elections. Each year, I've learned this month, that each year, the Ohio Department of Commerce offers $1,000 grants to townships who are responsible for maintenance of cemeteries. This grant is meant to assist with special projects or one-off costs. Routine cemetery maintenance is not eligible for grant support. Consideration, I guess, is given for special projects above the $1,000 threshold, especially those which have local matching dollars. The application period for this grant opens in July, and that's all I know at this point. So, once we get into July, I'm going to get online, learn more about this, and I will report back to you at the July trustee meeting if there's something that you would like to consider that we apply for. But you might be thinking whether there are any projects related to our rural cemeteries that we might be able to apply for a $1,000 grant. This month, we also received notice from the state of Ohio that the cell tower lease is being renewed for two more years from June 30 of this year to June 30 of 2023. And as you are aware, the annual lease payment from the state to the township is $18,000. As you'll recall, I got a new laptop from the Ohio Auditor of State because of our membership in the UAN software program. I have now donated my old laptop to the police department for their periodic use. But should anyone else in any department need to borrow a laptop for any purpose, I'm sure the police department will gladly loan that out. And finally, I want to remind everyone listening, as well as you, that we have a special meeting coming up Thursday night at 6 o'clock. That's June 17th. And that is another meeting to discuss the potential JED. And also, put on your calendar as trustees or any of our department heads, the next Montgomery County Township Association meeting will be on June 21st from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Montgomery County Business Solutions Center in Dayton. And I think that's everything I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heiston. With that, I want to pass it over to Chief Anzic with those please.
Good evening, everyone. Our Calea virtual onsite was June 7th through 9th. At this time, based on the exit interview, I believe that we will be awarded reaccreditation. Our assessors, Chief Benson and Captain Williams, were very impressed by our department, especially our community outreach. However, their report takes about five weeks to write up, and then we'll get it and know for sure. We have been delayed in the production of the second cruiser. I believe it was April. I told you that we refused one cruiser based on some electrical problems that they could not solve. So they were going to reorder us another cruiser, but that's been delayed with some of the fallout from the pandemic of the last year. The one we did receive is scheduled for upfitting here in the near future at the end of June. And I'd like to thank Mr. Heiston for the donation of the laptop. And again, anyone that needs it in any department, get ahold of us. We'll get it to you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Holbrook, roads department?
Sorry about that. I had to turn my video on. Just a few things today. First item is the 2004 John Deere BACCO that you declared excess some time ago due to the fact we ordered the new one, which it is still on schedule to be delivered sometime in the 1st of July. We did go ahead and put on the 2004 John Deere on gov deals, and it has already reached the trade-in value that Murphy Tractor gave us, so it will be sold on gov deals. Second item was the permissive motor vehicle license tax. I wanted to thank the board for passing that. It's desperately needed money, and we'll try to put it to the best use that we can. The only other items I had, we continue to mow and trim the cemeteries with all the rain. It's playing catch-up, just trying to get it done once a week. We did start our pre-chip seal patching on the roads that are going to get chipped still this year. Got a load off right before that week-long stint of rain, so we're right in the middle of getting the township roads mode right now. So once that's completed, we'll be back to patching the roads in anticipation of the chip seal program for this year. And that leads me to item C, which I forgot to put, was we are on our second round of roadside mowing, and that should be completed tomorrow, as long as there's no breakdowns. So with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sewell, Tony. Hello. Thank you, everyone. This past month, I did a few zoning permits, a new home addition on Little Twin, a fence on Brown Run, and additional accessory structure on Germantown, Middletown, and a new home on Preble County Line in Osters. The zoning commission and the Montgomery County planning commission have both approved changes to our zoning resolutions. The next steps for you all to hear it at a public hearing. So if I can go ahead and set that date tonight, it would have to be within the next 30 days from today.
When's our July meeting?
12, I believe.
I think Monday's on this July 12th.
Well.
So that's within 30 days. Can we do it the same night?
Sure, if you guys would like to.
Start the meeting at 7:00 with that.
Do you want to move over to this meeting?
Okay. Be here on the 12th. I will be here virtually if we're still doing that. I assume we're still doing it.
Yeah.
Just so you guys know.
Okay. So you can attend virtually.
All the restrictions are lifted.
Okay.
So.
So I'll wait and let you guys discuss that, and then I will move forward with that. My new office hours, again, are Monday, 8:00 to 10:00 AM, and Friday, noon to 2:00 PM. Also, additional timed by appointment. Those hours have been going great. I've seen many people in the office, actually. I think they were just excited to come see somebody. So that is going great. And then, my last item on my report is the enforcement process. I know we've talked about this a little here and there in the past. As, you know, summer is in full swing now, I'm starting to get issues with tall grass, things being put up that don't have permits, and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to put this back in front of you three to make sure that you are good with the process. If I needed to change anything, you can feel that.
Yeah, I think on this one, I think, if I recall correctly, we reviewed this and approved earlier this year on this process. And I don't have an issue with it. I think the only thing that I may have mentioned in that meeting or may want to make note now is just, you know, I have no problem with sending a note and notifying the resident. The key here is, what do we do if there's, you know, no response, and the next steps, and how do we handle it, manage it?
Right.
I think what we had talked in, and I'm not sure if it's fully outlined here, is that if they are non-responsive and there's no other complaints from property owners, how we manage it, I think, should be a little bit different than if there's other property owners or neighbors or whatever complaining about it. I don't want to just chase it because it seems like it's something that they shouldn't be doing. Just because I don't think that's the best use of our resources here now. That's just my opinion. I don't want to have a discussion around that. But I just don't want to be chasing things unless it's an issue to the residents of the township, I swear.
Yeah, the policy since I've been here at least has been, if there's a complaint from a neighbor, you can go deal with it as needed, but we don't really have the time or resources to have the zoning person driving around looking for stuff. So.
Sure.
If you see it on your way to work or whatever, when you're out and about, but don't be using township time to go drive around and search for things that aren't problems for the neighbors.
So, for example, if we have a neighbor that has grass that's 18 inches, two foot tall, obviously, that's going to attract animals, rodents, stuff like that. The neighbor's not necessarily complaining. However, it can become a huge issue for that property owner and surrounding property owners. Should I pursue that? Should I leave it?
That's where I think, I'm totally fine with that first notice. I think you should send the first notice. I think reasonable township people should respond and adjust and correct. I think where we have issue, I think the next step I would like to see is if you're not getting a response or not getting action. They don't have to necessarily respond as long as they take action, you know?
Right.
If you're not, I would probably prefer for us to chat about it here on how we manage one forward rather than, I think the next step on here is just no contact is made, we take an evidence and arranging for a case.
Correct.
I think that's where we just need to be careful, because I don't want to necessarily lock us in that's the next step. I think maybe a second notice, and maybe you already got a second notice one here. You've got to send a second notice on it, okay? If there's still no contact, that's when you would be setting up a case.
Yeah, I always just send a letter advising that there may be an issue. Please, you know, reach out to me. Or, you know, I always put the excerpt from the resolution in the letter. If I don't hear anything, I send a certified letter. And then, obviously, if they don't receive it, I'll have to go post a notice. If they do receive it, I get, you know, the proof that they've received it from the post office. And then, typically, they definitely do something about it then, but sometimes not. So, at that point, I would just come to you all.
And if it's a case that comes before us, I mean, the choice then is whether we want to start fining them essentially.
Correct. So they will not get fined until you all find them in violation. And there is a process that goes along with that. You know, it is a legal hearing. I would have to advertise it. I would have to send notice about it, and then you guys would have to hear it in a public hearing.
So that's nuisance abatement process. We've done it a handful of times over the years.
Yeah.
So you just, it's like, it's like, it's like a legal hearing. The people are allowed to come speak, like, we've done with the other zoning stuff, so.
Yeah. And like, you can come up with an agreement, like?
Yeah, you don't have to, you can come up with them, yeah.
It's all up to you guys, how you want to handle it, really.
I know, one of the last ones we asked was during the water district stuff. One of the people in it just happened to be one of the ones at the high school gym, which was full. The guy came and said he was out of, whatever. Worked it out, so there was no issue. He took care of it, and we went forward, so.
And it's basically the same process for neglecting to get a permit.
Okay. So, yeah, I'd just say the goal is not to agitate people either.
Sure, no, right, absolutely. I mean, like, I send the first letter, and I respond. I send the certified letter, they get it, still no response. I'm kind of like, hey, like I told somebody today, I am for you. Like, I'm not against you. I want you to be able to do, you know, your thing on your property and everything, but we do have standards for everybody's health and safety, so.
Yeah, I think my concern was that if we sent the second notice, they didn't respond, then we had this meeting. Truthfully, I believe you and trust you and believe that you're going to have some evidence. And so if they're in violation and they're not doing anything, I just don't want to get in the habit of immediately jumping to finding people. So if we can work out a negotiation or an agreement with people within that hearing and have a discussion with them, then I don't necessarily think we need to insert a step, like I originally had maybe thought that you would come back to the trustees, you know, during a regular meeting and have a discussion on what we want to do next. I think that's fine. If they haven't responded to a certified letter, and that's the second attempt, then I'm fine with the steps we laid out here, so.
And I bet, since I've been here, I bet we've averaged one or two maximum per year, maybe.
Yeah.
And then the people, you know, won't respond in the meetings.
I'd say it's 50/50. Sometimes no one comes.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Sometimes you get foreclosures, and then there's no one to come.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Absolutely. Yes, I'm good at that.
Okay.
All right. That concludes my report.
Thank you for that, Ms. Sewell. I guess, just a couple of general comments. I mean, we're going to move into the section here where the trustee reports. I guess my first couple of comments, we're now, as we'd already kind of alluded to there, moved into the point where we had talked about moving back to in-public hearings for the broader group. I guess at this time, just asking for the trustees to have this.
I guess at this time, just asking for the trustee to have a discussion on that. I think Mr. Stubbs just said how he felt that it was time for that. I, I agree, I looked out there and I know that the Ohio level, the county level tracker or whatever now has been disbanded and, and, you know, a lot of the guidelines are loosened up and so I think it's the right time, is my opinion, so Mrs. Reed, do you have any thoughts?
I completely agree, I think it's time for us to be back in person. I would also like to see us continue to use the online as well. I think that it's gotten, you know, with a bigger crowd, I guess if you will, so if we could still do it both ways to reach as many people as possible, yes, I don't see any reason why we need to continue to be just virtual.
Sure. I think maybe at the end of the year, look at recording our meetings, but not necessarily broadcasting them live, so it's free, so we can just upload it to YouTube, but get to the end of twenty twenty-one, the way we're doing it.
Okay.
And then we can get a camera set up in here potentially. And then just upload it to YouTube the next day. It's a whole lot easier to have an in-person conversation with people and then for us, if we're having a meeting, to have other distractions that aren't in our room, I think. So I think long-term, I think we should keep recording the meeting's video, but record them and upload them the next day.
Yeah.
So people can watch them, but if you wanna participate, you need to be here.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll see how it goes the rest of the year. I think it's gonna be a little bit of a challenge, obviously, I don't wanna force you back because they don't feel safe right this moment, but trying to, as you say, entertain, you know, a live crew and online is gonna be somewhat of a distraction, so understand that we're gonna have to face it the next six months, we'll see how it goes. But I, I guess with that, Mr. Heaton, would you be looking for a motion for us to have a public hearing or just make the announcement that we're gonna have public hearings from this point forward?
If I, if I recall the motion that you made when you went totally virtual, it was to stay that way until we were no longer in Level Three red. But it might be beneficial to have a motion, particularly if you are now going to switch, as Mr. Stubbs has suggested, and not do the live WebEx, only do recordings after the fact. If that's the plan you have, I think we should do that by motion.
No, what I said was at the end of twenty twenty-one, so continue for the rest of this calendar year with the WebEx, but then come January, reevaluate and see where we are. But I will make a motion to open our meetings back up to the public and I'm excited and I've been asking for this for months, I'm super excited to do that.
I will second that.
Thank you. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we, I will send out a revised notice for Thursday's meeting, inviting people to come in person as well as listen if they want to through WebEx, because I'm sure Mrs. this is, Brenda Waimer is gonna need to come via WebEx. On Thursday.
Thank you.
Okay.
And the next thing I was just gonna mention is obviously we're approaching mid-year here. I just wanted to note to Mrs. Sewell, Mr. Holbrook, Mr. Anzig, Department heads here, as we reach mid-year, in my opinion, it's a good time to review the annual budget, look at where you stack up versus what you've had appropriated, try to understand, you know, are things running ahead or behind, just review that budget, not asking for a full-blown report or anything like that come the July meeting, but I do think it'd be, I would benefit, you know, if you had a few comments when we got to next month's meeting, just to say where you might be stacking up and how things are going along the lines of the budget. If you would do that for me, I would appreciate it. Obviously, I'm not requiring that, but I would appreciate if we could kinda have a brief discussion on where the budget stands and how you guys feel of it, it's been going for six months of this year. The next topic is the JED progress. We've had no JED meetings since our last in-public trustee, regular scheduled trustee meeting, but we do have one this week as we were talking about, it is on Thursday of this week at six PM. Again, that's when we can be in person and progress continues to be made there. On the Parks Board, have a few items there. Number one is we are applying for a grant. We're looking to do some, some paving down at the parks, primarily in Kircher, as many of you guys have seen probably if you attend Kircher Park, it's a deal repair in many areas. They've got an estimate on what it would take for a mill infill, which is two hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. And as you can imagine, Kircher's just one of our parks that needs some repaving efforts and so they're applying for a grant. Unfortunately, that grant only has a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars for the entire Montgomery County. So I think the grant application that we're filling out for the parks is gonna be for a hundred and seven thousand and the remainder of the two, a hundred and twenty-ish thousand dollars left would be funded by Germantown or the Parks Board. So as you guys think, we do have a levy coming up in November for the parks. That entire budget is well below the two hundred and thirty thousand dollar paving for just Kircher, so you can imagine the fees and costs to keep up our parks here that we have with a lot of benefits for the public, can get very expensive very quickly and our budget is very small in comparison to a lot of those expenses. So just wanna make everyone aware of that grant and they are trying to do as much as they can to get funded in other ways. Number two thing is we have had an opening on our Oversight Board for, I don't know, roughly three months, somewhere in that timeframe, there was an applicant that applied to Germantown. One second, I'll get her name, it is Shelby, I don't know, mistakenly say her last name, but Anspach or Anspach. She has applied, she's lived in Germantown a little over a year, it says, and a couple years in Montgomery County. She's applied to that position and at the Monday, last Monday's council meeting in Germantown, they did approve her. So tonight, I'll be looking for a vote to approve Shelby Anspach to the Oversight Board for the Parks Board. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve Shelby Anspach to the Oversight Board for the parks.
For a sec. Second, thank you, Mrs. Reed. Mr. Waimer, could you spell Shelby's last name for me?
I will do that.
A-N-S-P-S and Paul?
Correct.
A-C-H. Okay, very good, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The other thing I did note last month is that the July Fourth Parade will be on this year. It is on July fifth at ten AM, I believe. There is detailed information on the Germantown website, you can find it out there and I think they posted to their Facebook page and, and Haley, I haven't asked you, though I'll ask you if you can, please share that on our page as well, that information.
That's my bad, I have to.
No, it's okay.
My bad.
And then the last piece, no, yeah, and the last piece on the Park Board is just continue planning for the levy that I mentioned for, for this year. So with that, I'll pass it over to Mrs. Reed.
All right, so I have some good news regarding the Senior Center. It is going to start opening in shifts, so that is the plan. You must reserve at your spot, some of you may have received the letter that the Senior Center mailed out, but in case you did not, they're, they're going to start doing activities that will be reduced cost sizes, activities where equipment such as cards and things are shared, they're not going to be doing that. The Tuesday-Thursday lunch program, which I think a lot of senior citizens went to, it will resume once the senior resource resumes, but that's not happening yet, but they're still doing the Monday meals. They're gonna be disinfecting, obviously, high-contact areas hourly, still going through all of those cleaning procedures. They have new memberships, I'm reading through this, to the Germantown Senior Center and that seems to be going well. The Phase One, it says it's gonna be from June twenty-first, it's gonna start here pretty soon and be open and offer the crafts and you can pick up your craft if you don't feel comfortable being in there, doing some quilting and social hour with coffee, drive-through lunches and park events, they're still going to be doing as many open-air events as they can. So the first Phase One will be from June twenty-first to July thirty-first and they're gonna phase and their opening and hopefully allow more and more people to attend that, but it's, we're moving in the right direction so that we can open that back up. And I already covered, when I spoke with Mr. Young today, I believe that's all that I have.
Memorial Day went really well, Mark and crew had the cemetery looking very nice as usual, but, you know, with the rain in the last couple of weeks, they've, they've got a hill to climb again, so. But it still looks great, Mark does a fantastic job as always in the, the new mower we purchased, they've already got it in use, I think he said they've already cut like fifty hours on it and it is definitely helpful. Getting, getting caught up, we're going to be sending away the injector pump off the, the big cat. It's a Ferris with a caterpillar motor injector pump, they're gonna send it off and see what's going on with it. Pool, we have Jocelyn Johnson has been appointed by the city, so I'm going to ask that tonight we also approve her to the pool board and that's Jocelyn, J-O-C-E-L-Y-N, Johnson. So I'll make a motion to appoint Jocelyn Johnson to the pool board.
I will second.
Mr. Stubbs, is this the pool oversight committee?
No, no, pool board.
Do we actually approve members of the pool board? I thought we just had to approve oversight.
I assume. I assume we do it both, but I could be wrong.
I had thought the same thing, the only reason I, I think I can comment on this is I think when we had discussed, Mrs. Sewell being on our side, we're gonna have to vote, but then when she went to just regular work, we did not vote, so I think it is just a.
Okay, all right, the city approves her, so that's fine.
So, so we'll withdraw that motion?
Yeah, withdraw the motion. Pool's going well, they opened, what, a week or two ago and they, they're doing good, selling pool passes with pool, doing good. Jeremy Stillon, I have a question for you. It's just a general question for next year. Would, would it be possible or would you think it reasonable for us to hire a part-time mower for our cemeteries that maybe we could use? At the Germantown Cemetery as well. I was gonna run it by the cemetery board. If you thought it was a good idea here. So we could have two, two jobs, two different people paying this person, but be able to mow and help the, help the crews keep up.
I don't know that the budget can take that. I mean, that's kinda why we let Scott go fall.
Right. Well, just, I just mean part-time summer help, not, not part-time year-round.
I, I think that's something we're gonna have to sit down and put the numbers to it, to see if it would benefit us or not.
Okay.
I'd rather not commit to that.
No, and I didn't expect you to commit, I just wanted to bring up the idea, potentially, maybe give you guys more time on the road, the roads and then have someone dedicated just to mowing, whether it be one day a week or whatever. For us, so just something to think about and I can come out, come out to your office sometime and talk to you, so.
That'd be great.
All right. Senior Center Oversight opening, did we ever get an answer on that?
No, we don't meet again until July and we actually don't have the date set for the July meeting.
Okay.
The meeting's early, so.
And do we know what was sent to the school for the JED? Yes, Mr. Wolfsey sent the drafts of the two petitions that they would have to eventually sign, then let them know that it was draft forms and then when they were more formalized that they would send over the. So my understanding is on Wednesday's meeting, we should be looking at the final drafts. I think Brenda from Denim Marshall had sent over the drafts of the contract and everything to the county prosecutors to review and stuff and I know she did get comment back from Schiff, I'm not sure exactly who that is.
Germantown City.
So Schiff had sent some comments back, I think it was like three clerical errors and I, not errors, but three grammaticals or clerical things he wanted to add into the contract. She sent over the red line and I didn't realize until right before this meeting that you guys weren't copying, she sent that a couple of days ago, so I just forwarded that over to you before this meeting, see if I have that in your email, but I'm not sure if other people provide the comments and we can finalize this month or not, but we'll know tomorrow or Thursday.
Okay. All right, and then lastly. I had the opportunity to speak with Chief Bill Benson of the Kalia Accreditation Board. I got a phone call interview and then I came to the public hearing that night and spoke again. I just wanna share that the Germantown Sheriff's Police Department is very impressive and Chief Benson shared those thoughts with me. He said when he got our, our case or we came up to his desk, he saw that we had six full-time officers and he thought, well, this is a, this is a mistake. There's either sixty or six hundred. And because he had just finished the department, I believe he said in Colorado, that had five hundred and eighty people. And he said what we do with our department and our officers is pretty amazing, what they're able to do to stay accredited. Chief Anzig, Sergeant Birch do a fantastic job and all the officers, every single officer we have, fantastic job. Had to do a ride-along recently. And just knowing how community-oriented our police department is and how much they care and how much time and effort they put into their job. And I, Shawna, I see you on the meeting. I can't say enough about Shawna. She jumped in, she, her first, what, couple of months on the job and she's doing the accreditation for Kalia, fantastic job. I was in here, I got to see some of the behind-the-scenes work and. Just, I can't say. And the good things about the police department. And it was an honor to be able to speak to Chief Benson about my feelings towards our police department, but then to come to the public hearing that night and see other people in the community as well, share their positive interactions with our police department is, is, is very impressive. So that's all I have tonight, but again, our police department does a fantastic job and I'm privileged to be over the police department at this time.
Yeah, I'll just add on to that, I know Shawna, you haven't been here, but, you know, I mean, you're six, eight months and I know that Lori had explained to me on my onboarding how difficult that accreditation is and that our department is very small, maybe one of the smallest ones in the country that gets accreditation, so I appreciate, you know, obviously, Chief Anzig, your leadership and what you guys do there, but also Shawna, you stepping in and making sure that that stays on par with what Lori had done, which was a very high bar she set there, so appreciate the work done in the police department and echo what Jacob said.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate all the praise, I really do.
With that, the only other side note I'll make is, Mr. Holbrook, if you're still on the call, I know we're going to go to public hearings at this point in time, so I will reach out to you so you can give me a hand if possible on what your thoughts are on setting up this room appropriately and I think I, we can manage it pretty quickly. But then other than that, are there any other open topics tonight? Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to close the public, or the meeting this evening.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at seven forty-eight. Good night, everyone.